Thank you, Vice Chair Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins is absent. Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Chair Wiscom is also absent, but we have more.
Okay, thank you. Preliminary matters. Are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items? Ms. DeBusk?
Commissioner Schwartz, there are none.
Are the minutes for October 4th going to be postponed?
Commissioner Lodge, I was going to discuss that on Item C, but...
Oh, I see. Okay, okay, thank you. All right, are there any announcements and appeals?
Yes, I would like to announce that the project at 104 Jorgensen Lane was appealed to the City Council, and so no date has yet been set for that appeal hearing.
Okay, thank you. And then C is review, consideration, and action on the following draft Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. And those for October 4th, 2018 minutes and Planning Commission resolution for 104 Jorgensen Lane.
Commissioner Lodge, my understanding is that the Planning Commission has not had a chance to fully review those minutes and resolutions, and so I believe that you would like a motion to continue.
Is there a motion to continue the minutes, some resolution?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would move that we continue review of the meeting minutes and the related resolution to our next Planning Commission hearing date, which I see is November 1st, if that's still our schedule. Looking at Ms. DeBusk to confirm.
Is there a second? Come now.
A second then.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan. All right, on the motion to postpone to November 1st, the October 4th minutes and resolution of 104 Jorgensen Lane, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so ordered. That was unanimous. Okay, that brings us to Item D, which is comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on this agenda, not seeing any members of the public present, seeing only staff and planning commissioners. We will go on to the next item, which is Item 3, which is a discussion item, the 2018 General Plan Implementation and Adaptive Management Program Report. Ms. Deisty or Ms. DeBusk?
Madam Mayor, yes, I just wanted to introduce this item. Dan Gullett, Principal Planner, I'm the newest member of the Long Range Planning and Special Studies Team, and very happy to be here in that capacity. So we are here for the General Plan Implementation and Adaptive Management Program Report. So this allows you as a Planning Commission to have a focused review of this document. This is also on the agenda for next Thursday's joint meeting between the Planning Commission and City Council for discussion. This report includes a review of the state general plan guidelines from 2017, and out of that review came some future potential priority work items. So one of the agenda items for your joint meeting with City Council next week is to review whether or not adjustments need to be made to the Planning Division's major work items list. We're not recommending any at this time, but there are priority items identified here that we would work into our work program moving forward, and that's typically discussed at the April joint meeting between Planning Commission and City Council. So Rosie Deisty and Timmy Bolton will be presenting a summary of this report, and we're also joined by Jessica Metzger, if there's questions on housing.
Thank you.
Happy to get feedback on this report for the Planning Commission also. This is a big work effort for staff, and we want it to be useful and informative.
It is indeed, from reading the report. This is just a discussion item, there won't be any action taken today on it, but that will happen at the joint meeting next week. Thank you. Ms. Deisty?
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. So the purpose of our meeting today, as Mr. Gullett mentioned, is to do this annual review and discussion of the 2018 General Plan Implementation and Adaptive Management Program Report. Later, I'll be discussing what the focus of this year's report is, but for the purposes of your review and discussion, we would like to get your input on some work item recommendations and on the report itself, too. The work item recommendations you'll hear about are staff's input, and they're intended to set the framework for these joint Planning Commission and City Council meetings that occur later. Some of the work program item recommendations in the report are already in the Planning Department's work program, but have not yet been scheduled or allocated resources, and others are new items to be considered when some of the more higher priority items are done. And this input is based really on staff's adaptive management review of the general plan. And our presentation today is not going to focus on the materials that are in the appendices A, B, and C, but we can answer any questions you might have about those appendices, which are kind of a repeated item annually in these reports. So our agenda would be staff presentation between myself and Mr. Bolton, public comment, if any, on the plan, and then your Planning Commission discussion. So I will be starting off the presentation with the general plan evaluation, and then Timmy Bolton will discuss the growth management portion of the report. I'm going to talk a little background on general plan implementation reporting, then discuss the Governor's Office of Planning and Research 2017 general plan guidelines, how we evaluated the city's general plan against these guidelines, and then talk about our staff's recommendations. So for background, for implementation reporting on the general plan, really the only mandated portion of the plan that needs to be reported on is the housing element. And these reports are annual reports that go to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and this annual reporting allows us to track what's going on in housing, but also allows us to remain eligible for funding for affordable housing opportunities. So that report is prepared each spring and submitted online to Housing and Community Development. Other sort of mandated reporting on the general plan come from the general plan EIR mitigation measures, and that's in the council adopted mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and that's presented in Appendix A of the report. And then on the Climate Action Plan, that itself is a mitigation measure for greenhouse gas emissions with buildout of the general plan, and that also set up a schedule for annual reporting on the same schedule as when we do the general plan AMP report. And we also, in the Climate Action Plan, are meant to update this community-wide carbons emissions inventory every five years, so that was reported on last year. And we also report on the status of all the Climate Action Plan's measures, and then we include a sort of indicators of climate change in California and future projections report. That started a few years ago, we started including that, and we're now doing that annually because things are changing rapidly in that realm. So the general plan's overarching vision is a sustainable Santa Barbara, and that's enabled by the city, residents, businesses, developers, and community organizations working together to achieve a more sustainable community. And this is achieved by managing growth with the wise use of resources and protecting the natural and built environment, among many other goals. The adaptive management framework is in the introduction section of the 2011 general plan, and this is intended so the general plan would be viewed as a living document, and course corrections could be made without the time and expense of major updates or after-the-fact reactive actions. So when we look at this review every year, we're looking to answer whether implementation of the general plan is meeting the vision of a sustainable Santa Barbara and whether adaptive management is needed. So within that context, the focus of the report changes each year, and that's based on input from your Commission and staff. So in 2018, I know the focus of this year's report was discussed at a Planning Commission lunch meeting in the spring, I believe, and it was determined that this year we would review the entire general plan against these new general plan guidelines that came out in 2017, with a particular focus on resiliency as we're doing that review, and also agreed to include the annual growth management section that we have always included, and that's on non-residential and residential growth. Okay, so just before I get into the general plan evaluation, I just wanted to explain a little bit about what's in these guidelines. So these were released, it was a comprehensive update to the guidelines, which had not been updated since 2003, and so this new addition has really changed what was prior guidelines from the Office of Planning and Research. So for all the mandatory and even common optional elements of general plans, the new guidelines set out all the statutory requirements in great detail, and then they provide also recommended policy language. And these guidelines contain resources and templates for cities and counties to use when they're considering themes, structures, and policies for their general plan. So one common element throughout the guidelines is each chapter starts with the statement, "Planning healthy, equitable, resilient, and economically vibrant places." And I thought that could be considered another way of stating our own general plan vision of a sustainable Santa Barbara. So a really helpful portion of the new guidelines is what's called the completeness checklist. So what they've done is put all the government code requirements for the mandatory general plan elements in a checklist, but it is an advisory checklist, and it only contains issues legally required per the government code. And it makes clear in the guidelines the city can address any locally important issues in their general plan. There are also lengthy new sections on healthy, equitable, and resilient communities, economic development, and climate change, and those topics can feed really into any element of the general plan. So this slide, just as a reminder, kind of goes over what we have in our own general plan. So we have a combination of newly updated and older elements, and some of the older elements had some new policies developed in 2011, sort of put on top of the older elements until a comprehensive update can be completed. And so jurisdictions can organize their general plan in any format, but as the guidance says, the elements and issues should form an integrated internally consistent plan. They also recommend that a concise general plan can avoid repetitive discussion of topics by consolidating the statutory requirements into a few functional elements. So these are the seven mandatory elements listed here, and these are the order that they appear in the government code. There really is no ranking of importance, and in this case, the city had combined, or does combine, the conservation element and the noise element into what's known as the environmental resources management element. And then this slide shows optional elements that our city has decided to prepare. So economy and fiscal health is a new one from 2011. We've done historic resources in 2012, and then we do have a parks and recreation element from 1982 that's combined with open space. So I wanted to emphasize that the review against the completeness checklist was not meant to be sort of a criticism of the city's general plan. It really just sets the stage, and completeness, and it kind of performs legwork that could be done prior to updating any of these elements for future general plan updates. And I'm not going to address how each element stacked up against a checklist, but instead I just wanted to summarize that there are no glaring inconsistencies or major completeness items that are missing from the general plan elements, and in particular, the housing element, which is our most regulated and scrutinized element, really complies with everything that it needs to have in it. So that's really good. So looking at each element individually and the general plan as a whole, what did stand out for me and for ease of use for city staff and community members is that the older elements should be updated and better integrated into the general plan, and some topics that are discussed in multiple elements, for example flooding in particular, should be reviewed to ensure it's internally consistent, and you'll see later, I recommend that we consolidate the flooding issues into one main element, like the safety element, and then have cross-references to other elements when necessary. Oh, there's the graphic. Forgot to press that button. So in the Office of Planning and Research guidelines, there's also a lengthy discussion about environmental justice, and it's defined in the government code as "fair treatment of people of all races, cultures, and incomes with respect to development, adoption, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies." And there was new state legislation in 2016 about environmental justice elements, and that legislation states it could be a new separate element or policies that are integrated in the whole general plan. So going into this report, one of the questions staff had is whether or not the city is required to produce a new environmental justice element or new integrated policies per that legislation. So in this review, we determine that environmental justice element or policies are only required at this time if areas of the city meet the definition of disadvantaged communities, which are identified in the state's Communities Environmental Health Screening Tool, and those are areas that are low-income and disproportionately affected by environmental pollution and other hazards. So using the tool that they provide at the state level, the city does not have areas that are considered disadvantaged communities. What we did see, though, by looking at this tool, is that we do have portions of the city that are considered low-income areas. So that means these areas are potentially eligible for greenhouse gas emissions cap-and-trade auction proceeds, and those come from agencies that administer the California Climates Investments Program. So we could be monitoring these funding sources for opportunities. So to summarize, there's no statutory requirement to address environmental justice issues at this time, but we would recommend in future general plan updates to make a special effort to expand public outreach to the low-income areas of the community, and also to consider environmental justice concepts when we're making funding decisions on desirable public amenities like parks or sustainable transportation. So in summary, after looking through the general... City's compliance with the completeness checklist and other issue areas, thinking about what would be ideal for future general plan updates, I have a couple, or staff has a couple of recommendations for potentially prioritizing future updates. So the environmental resources management element, that's already in the city's work program and has been for several years, and including that as a priority for near-term updates is recommended for several reasons, but one of them is we have a great chance to establish numeric minimum habitat and safety buffers for creeks and wetlands, and that's similar to the effort that was recently adopted by the Planning Commission and City Council for the Coastal Land Use Plan. So this update could carry forward that important precedent so that property owners, staff, the public, and city decision-makers are provided consistent standards and certainty when making decisions on setbacks from creeks. And in the long run, this can expedite permit review decisions. Also, this update would carry out a key general plan EIR mitigation measure that called the city out to map and protect important upland habitats, and it gives us a chance to incorporate climate resilience throughout this topic. Then for the safety element, I don't think a comprehensive update is necessary, it's a pretty recent element, but it could be reviewed and targeted for a targeted update to discuss various issues, but in particular, I mentioned consolidating the flood policies, because right now, those are in the environmental resources management section, the conservation element, and in the safety element. And we want to make sure those policies are still relevant accordance to updates to flood plain maps and ordinances. Also, the city's safety element really should be better integrated with the city's local hazard mitigation plan. That's an annex to the county's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan that's updated every five years, and we also do our own little local update annually on that plan, but it's not really integrated well with the safety element at this time. And then finally, the safety element does discuss climate change adaptation and resiliency, but it's really focused more on sea level rise than anything else, and I think it could be expanded for other indicators such as wildfire, extreme precipitation, extreme heat, prolonged drought, and public health. And then in the longer term, when there's more time and budget and staff resources, circulation element is actually a really great forward-thinking element, mainly created in 1997, but since then, there's a lot of new modes and technologies to be thinking about. There's self-driving cars, shared vehicle use, electric scooters and bicycles, electric vehicle charging, alternative fuels, so there's a lot of new topics that should be addressed. Also, the circulation element is full of great implementation measures, but it would be helpful to really prioritize those and to identify reasonably reliable funding for them. It could be expanded to really look at network connectivity gaps, especially in the transit network, things like that, and also to include maps, because right now, it only has our existing street system and existing bikeway network that's, you know, from 1997, so it's out of date. Finally, I think we should be looking at the resiliency of our transportation network in terms of disasters, that debris flows and other things that occasionally cut off our major transportation networks. Then on land use, land use element is also fairly recent, there's just a couple of things that could be expanded upon. There could be more information on schools and educational facilities, because we really don't discuss private schools, preschools, career colleges, adult ed centers, things like that. There could be better policies for liquid and solid waste disposal, we're missing inventories of existing solid waste disposal areas, composting facilities, infrastructure to recover edible food waste, and things like that. And then finally, we could look at our land use designation of open space, because in the government code, open space is defined as "any parcel or area of land or water that is essentially unimproved and devoted to open space use," whereas our general plan includes sort of expanded definitions and includes things like all the city parks, Highway 101, Montecito Country Club and the zoo is open space. And we have discretion on how we designate open space, but it just may be useful to create categories within that, within open space, so we can distinguish what's essentially unimproved open space from developed open space areas that are mainly designated for scenic and visual resource value. So these are just suggestions for future updates, could be 10 years from now, just depends on when, how fast we move through things in the work program. And with that, I'll hand it over to Timmy to cover growth management.
Would it be okay to ask some questions?
Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you. A question on the possibility of greenhouse gas funds for low-income communities. Could you explain that a little bit?
I'll just tell you what I know, which is there are proceeds from the cap-and-trade auctions that go on at the state level, and there's a sort of overarching California Climate Investments Authority that designates funds, and I think some of them may be programmatic and some may be grant funds. That's about as much as I know right now, I'd have to look into it further to fully answer your question, but I believe there is funding out there, especially for potentially transportation projects and things like that.
Mr. Gullett?
Yeah, Mayor Lodge, the category of disadvantaged communities is also a big consideration in the active transportation program funding, and it's defined differently for purposes of that funding source, but that is something that the city has included in applications as identification of those disadvantaged communities.
And just in general, are the funds used for direct support of the families, or is it infrastructure and community enhancement, let's say?
Commissioner Campanella, I would need to look into it further, I don't want to make an answer that might not be correct, so...
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of questions in this section, and they're probably a little tangential, so you guys all enjoy this. There's a section in the circulation section where you briefly mention telecommunications and broadband in a bold, bold set of exhibits in the middle of page 13, and then you never mention it again anywhere. I'm just curious as to both in a, in a, if you can call it a, you know, not a hardscape sort of transportation or circulation, but a, you know, whatever, in the air transportation circulation, and in the new concept of this sustainability kind of thing, why is, why would there not be a bigger discussion on broadband and/or cell availability in terms of moving towards, for example, moving towards a city-based broadband system for everybody, or the availability of temporary cell units or broadband units in the case of a natural disaster? Are those not appropriate parts to begin to fit into a general plan?
Ms. Deisty?
Commissioner Jordan, I actually think that's a really great suggestion. If you look at the government code, for whatever reason, the circulation element is where you talk about local public utilities, and as you can see and hear in bold in their checklist, they do suggest telecommunications and broadband. So that would be a great suggestion for a future update, or even if it's something you would like us to discuss next year in the general plan AMP report.
I'll keep it on the list.
It's something we could look into.
And then kind of off on a tangent, it's back further in talking about the new inclusion of equitable communities. You call it equitable and resilience, but equitable. Have you ever seen, this is, there are components of what I'm thinking strewn about the general plan, but have you ever seen an element that's called either social equity or social justice element? So we have, we have components of what that means to me strewn throughout the general, whether it's a housing, whether it's a transportation, whether it's that, but drawing back again to broadband, I know from my travels that when you go to other countries, some of the most defining social improvements in a country came about when broadband was available to more people, or the most of the people. So when they went from, like, no cell phones existed or no broadband existed to now it exists, it was a defining moment in the, what I would call the social improvement of that community or country, in some cases in small countries. So is that, the report or the requirement from the state seems to tie it directly to environmental, and I'm wondering if there's more, an idea or a need to have more of a social tie to when you use the word equitable? There's about 10 questions in there, sorry. Really, my overall question is, have other people done general plans that include that type of element, social equity or social justice?
So Commissioner Jordan, I don't know the answer to if other people have done this. I would not be surprised if other communities haven't done it, and a big portion of the new general plan guidelines does cover those topics, so it's certainly something the city could pursue, should they want to.
Well, it seems like we do it a lot already, I guess is part of my point, but they're strewn about through different type of policy pages that don't inter, and you see this in here, too. They don't interconnect or intersect well, they're strewn about everywhere, and how can we start to get those in there? So, but, you know, I could probably come up with a dozen things that I, that I think would fit into that, that some we do, some we don't, some we talk about constantly, some we don't, then don't happen because we don't have a policy document to fall back on to move forward on. I don't know, just an interesting thought I had, to me. And then, let's see, I just have some little tabs here, I just got to find them, I think just one more. The conservation element, top of the page 17, we say that we are compliant in the very broad categories of water and hydraulic force, which covers all kinds of water mischief. So I would ask, I guess, just philosophically or tangentially, how we meet that, how we meet saying... broad categories of water and hydraulic force, which covers all kinds of water mischief. So I would ask, I guess, just philosophically or tangentially, how we meet that, how we meet saying we're compliant if we're in a drought forever, seven years, we're overdrafting our groundwater supplies, we're in the middle of a sea level rise process that will have a catastrophic impact on half of our water system, certainly our wastewater, wastewater plant and the, and the underground piping that goes along with it, that would be inundated. And so how do we, how do we say we're compliant there without, without saying we know or we've got these deficiencies that we need to start working on?
Commissioner Jordan, I would say, on the face of it, we're compliant in that if you do look at these elements, we do discuss water conservation and water supply and demand, but you're also correct that it's out of date, and this is where perhaps the safety element could be the place where you update those issues, or maybe throughout the general plan. Yes, we do need to look at the new realities.
I guess over a beverage, I would argue with you that we're compliant because we're conserving is kind of a false compliance, because we're, we're really self-limiting our use, and we need, I mean, it's, we have this argument every month that Water Commission anyhow, it's like you're still looking at the bar graph that shows 15,000 acre feet a year as, as a normal water year, and then we've conserved 30% out of that down to 10 or 10.5. And there's this constant push from commissioners, of course, to just say, get rid of that $5,000, 5,000 units at the top there. The new normal is a supply of 10, and so now, if that's the new normal, then how are we doing in, for example, on this checklist, if that's the new normal, and we can't get 10 next year, because the only reason we were getting there is because we literally were blessed with conservation rates, we increased rates and forced people to use less, we overpumped groundwater, whatever it may be. So it's just, I get what you're saying. It's like, this is the box you get to fit it in, and you put it in. It just seems like when you have the opportunity to bust out the sides of that box and start including what's on the ground today, rather than when you started with this miserable document years ago, that might be the opportunity. But maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it's when it's the next time you update the whole document. I don't know.
Well, as the general plan says in the introduction, it's meant to be a living document, nimble and respond instead of reactive after the fact, so.
And I recognize, a living document is subject to resources available, too.
Correct.
We only get to make it live as much as we have resources, so.
Yeah.
So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I just have a few questions, as starter questions. I'm going to try to correlate Ms. Dicey, your presentation with the package we have, and if it, if I need to kind of wait and have Mr. Bolton comment, you can let me know. So on page three of, of our documentation, not that your presentation, but the actual Implementation Adaptive Management Program report, my first question to you under the job/housing imbalance, the second bullet, the statement here, I won't read the first sentence, the second sentence, however, this improvement may be due to limitations in the methodology used to develop the ratio rather than changes in the on-the-ground conditions. Can you tell me a little bit about, or identify what the limitations in the methodology are?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz, Mr. Bolton will be covering that in his portion of the presentation.
That's a Timmy, I'm going to put Timmy, TB here, okay? Very good, I'll come back to that. On the next page, page four, under residential development, the last bullet point, could you direct me to, perhaps it's a table or a matrix that shows the expired and withdrawn AUD projects? Just kind of by way of reference, so that I, if not in today's hearing, I can look at that more closely prior to next Thursday's joint work session? Says there's been a stagnation while you're looking for that, while there's been a stagnation in the AUD program since the first quarter of 2017, or there has been, that's a statement. Since then, some projects have advanced through the development process, while others have expired or been withdrawn.
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Schwartz, we don't have a list in here, I don't believe, of those projects, but I can provide that to you offline. We do have a graph that'll be in my presentation, too, that shows that stagnation, but in terms of a list of the specific projects.
Okay, I would like to see actually the number that have expired and withdrawn, those two separate categories, for next Thursday, if you would. And then on page 12 of our staff report, this is under, this is within the land use element section, I think this is under the subsection solid and liquid waste disposal. On page 12, under the recommendation paragraph, the, next to the last sentence, there's a phrase in here, "It's difficult to determine if they are internally consistent or fully compliant with state requirements." So this is, you know, a little disconcerting to read, and I wanted to ask staff to expound on this a bit, because don't we need to determine if we're, we have internally consistent and fully compliant policies and the language around those with state requirements?
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz, the, so on, in that statement, it was really to do with, on the issue of flooding, and I felt that until we got the go-ahead to sit down and pull all the flooding policies together, from the three different elements together, and look at them side by side, that would be sort of the time to check and see if, just to ensure there's no contradictions, and they, I would assume or think that a lot of them might be repetitive rather than internally inconsistent. So it's just an exercise that hasn't been done yet.
It's an unknown, basically, is what you're saying, is an unknown, and until we undertake that work.
Yeah. And I'm not terribly concerned about this, because we do have a really good floodplain management, floodplain ordinance. I, I'm not implying the city's doing anything wrong, it's just a matter of sitting down and going through the exercise.
Okay. Then on page 14, this is a, this is under the circulation element. On page 14, under recommendation, the third bullet down reads, identify specific gaps in transportation network connectivity. Now, I thought that we accomplished that with the bicycle master plan. Does this go beyond what we accomplished with that plan?
Yeah.
As, as far as this section goes?
Yeah, Commissioner Schwartz, I was thinking of, yeah, beyond the bicycle master plan, transit or issues to do with getting from, let's say, the train to your hotel, or things like that.
Okay. If I could just suggest, on page 16, under, the very top is a section which you have repeated in each group discussion. This phrase generally complies, I would just suggest to staff, so pardon me, Madam Vice Chair, this is just a suggestion, this term generally complies, I think it's going to prompt more questions. Well, how does it generally comply? Where are we not compliant? So I don't know if there's a clearer way of expressing that, or allaying any concerns, but this phrase is used throughout the document, and it just occurred to me that staff might want to revisit that. Now, on that same page, maybe this is to Mr. Vincent, I don't know, the one sentence in the middle of that page that speaks to the Housing Accountability Act, for me, the, not only was the wording awkward, but I really think it warrants more than one sentence, and I'll leave it to Mr. Vincent and staff to figure that out, but I think with the significant implications of and requirements to comply with the Housing Accountability Act, I think it deserves more than one sentence in something as significant as this document, and the consideration both of our policies and the work program, staff's work program. Let's see. I think those may be my questions right now for you, Ms. Dicey, and then I'll, I'll probably have to circle back both to Mr. Bolton and perhaps you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Mr. Bolton, if you want to continue the presentation.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. I'm here today to talk about the growth management portion of this report. I'm going to start by going through the direction provided in the general plan vision, and talk about that, how that relates to the jobs/housing balance, and then delve into non-residential and residential development activity in the city. So first and foremost, when we look at the general plan and the direction it provides through its vision for a sustainable Santa Barbara, these are the two bullet points that relates most closely to growth management. In regards to growth, it's to manage growth within limited resources to retain the desirable aspects of the city without sacrificing economic vibrancy and demographic diversity. In regards to housing, it's to allow as much housing as possible within resource limits to provide an array of lifestyle options for a diverse resident population. So if we dig into this a little deeper and look at the EIR for the general plan, which is what analyzed what the growth potential would be, and analyzed what the resource limits are here in the city, we really see this theme about the jobs/housing balance. And the premise is essentially, if there's a rough balance between the jobs in the city and the housing in the city, that can improve key sustainability and resiliency issues, because it helps with the commute issue, it means more people, more of the workers are living here and not commuting long distances from out of town, which has significant greenhouse gas, as well as resiliency issues in the instance when a mudslide takes out the freeway and we're missing our workforce. The EIR also established that historically there's been an undersupply of housing here and an oversupply of jobs, and it identified that one of the key contributors towards future job growth is non-residential growth. And without a corresponding increase in workforce housing for that growth, there could be additional significant issues to the community. So really, the general plan and its policies and implementation actions is focused around this idea of limiting non-residential growth and prioritizing housing where possible. So if we look at the jobs/housing balance and how it was with the EIR baseline and where we are today, from the pure ratio of just the simple number of jobs to the number of housing units, we see an improvement. We went from 1.43 in the 2008 baseline to 1.28 in current times. I do want to highlight here, though, that there's, there are some limitations to using the simple ratio. It doesn't actually speak to the fact as to whether the ratio of jobs to housing is meeting the workforce preferences, whether it's affordable. There exists a scenario where you could have 100,000 housing units and 100,000 jobs, but all 100,000 housing units are occupied by retirees or non-workforce housing effectively. In addition, speaking to that methodological issue, is that the way in which jobs were calculated in the EIR baseline, and that's the same assumptions we carried forward here, it's based on employment information, and the limitation with that is that the scope of the analysis, it's the workers from, who live in Santa Barbara. So that doesn't then consider the jobs who are held by people who don't live in our geography, which is an inherent limitation there, because it's not the full scope of jobs. We carry that forward just to maintain consistency, but it's not ideal. And so the way we got at this issue another way is we look and say, where are the workers in Santa Barbara? Where do they actually live? And so when we look at that information, unfortunately, 2015 is the most recent data set we have available. We see that relative to the EIR baseline, there's been a relative stagnation. There's about the same number of workers in the city now as was then, and same relative to who live on the south coast. But when we look back to 2002, which isn't inherently special data, it's simply the oldest one we have in that data set, we see that there's about 15% fewer in both of those categories. So we see that overall, there's still this downward trend in the number of workers who are actually living in Santa Barbara. And so the net result of this is that there are approximately 35,000 workers who commute into the city every day, which, for the reasons mentioned earlier, has environmental sustainability and resiliency issues. So if we delve into the non-residential development component of this discussion, as I mentioned, there's a focus on limiting growth and, non-residential growth. And so the primary tool that the general plan uses is the Non-Residential Development Growth Management Program, or GMP, which limits these three types of non-residential development over the 20-year program timeline to 1.35 million square feet, and that's the total 20-year program limit with an annual allocation of 20,000 square feet for the small addition component. And the takeaway here when we looked at this is, we're about 26% through the 20-year program timeline for the GMP, and if you look at the total column under total use on the gray, we've only used about 19% of that square footage. Now, as I mentioned, only the small addition has an annual allotment, but if we assume what the total limits would be, we'll see that there has been less non-residential development within these categories than would have been limited if these trends continue into the future. And if we look at small addition with that annual allotment, we see that we haven't come close to that 20,000 annual limit, and so to date, it's all been rolled over into the community benefit category, which has matched the program timeline primarily due to the Direct Relief International project in 2015, which has taken a bulk of this GMP square footage to date. I do want to highlight, though, that there are plenty of projects that come in that have been reworked, redesigned, to have not been limited through this program. So it's not that this program doesn't have effect, it's just, within the projects that are using it, it has been less than we might have expected to date. When we look at the growth management program, another thing that it did was establish these development areas. So if we hearken back to this vision of managing growth efficiently, the growth management program determined that if we located non-residential development in this downtown area, which is the dark gray on the map, the map, essentially where the grid is, we see that that was the area that could most efficiently absorb new non-residential development based on the grid, providing more efficient transportation, as well as the alternative transportation resources. So that's one of the areas that the general plan really wants to focus development. So when we look to see where has non-residential growth been occurring since the GMP was adopted, we see that by and large, the majority of development has been occurring in these areas. And then generally, the airport was then the second largest area. So with this construction figure, that's since the GMP was adopted in 2013, and we see that nearly half was in the downtown area, and then 36% at the airport. If we look at where development that's in the pipeline, so projects that have not been built but are in some form of the permit process, we see that over 50% are in the downtown area with about a third in the airport area. And if we look at demolition credit, which serves as a proxy for development rights and potential future development, we see that, as consistent with the numbers above, it's still about 50% of that in the downtown area. So we see that in both the, or all, in that, the non-residential that's constructed, the non-residential that's in the pipeline, and then potential future, it's all located in the areas we anticipated. So taking that all into consideration, we really didn't see any need for major course corrections with the growth management program where non-residential development, the GMP's only about 25%, you know, a quarter through its life, and development seems to be operating how we had anticipated, and it's occurring where intended and envisioned. So our prime recommendation here is just to continue to track it in the AMP to see whether those trends continue in the future, and if there are any major shifts. If we shift to the residential side of things, I think this is one of the, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Campanella.
Sorry if I can, on the non-residential development. The slide 23, the one you just passed. So just to refresh our memory, this is what is known as the downtown area, this grid, right? Okay. So the downtown area is, you, you mentioned the, the benefit of non-residential growth being in this area, transportation, et cetera. And then when you look at the jobs/housing balance, is this the area that we also would be looking at for having housing in order to accommodate the workers, this downtown area? Is that our goal, pretty much?
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Campanella, yes, there is direction in the general plan to prioritize housing over non-residential development. So one of the metrics that I'll speak to a little later, too, and also is in the report, is we looked at where housing was happening and which zone it was in. So there's an emphasis towards putting housing in the commercial and multifamily zones, or the single-family zones, for instance, which lines up fairly well with this greater gray area in the GMP for the downtown development area.
Okay. Tying into that, just, if you could, go back to slide 22. Okay. And a question for staff, asking the right person. When we get our monthly reports on AUD, the summary sheet shows how much non-residential square footage is being removed, net, based upon the applications that we have through, all the way through construction. I think this, that number's about 85,000 square feet on, on that report, if somebody has it. it.
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Campanella, yes, the most recent AUD density program cases report as of October 3rd showed that there was a loss of approximately 88,000 square feet of net commercial square footage.
Okay. So just looking at jobs-housing balance, if we're developing on commercial, let's say, these are underutilized, let's say, or identified sites for the most, for the most part. So if we're, what we're doing is precluding someone from not only continuing to utilize that retro, in a retrofit way, but either adding small and minor additions, transfer of non-residential density on TEDR. So it's a minimum of 85,000 square feet would be removed and potentially more if those properties would continue to be developed. Would that be a fair statement?
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Campanella, yeah, I mean, if you're removing the commercial square footage and replacing it with housing, then yes, there's a potential to shift that ratio.
So when it comes time to, for us to evaluate the program, I'm just saying that may be one of the things, positives, negatives, changes, that might be one of the things that we keep in mind relative to how it's impacting job-housing balance, which we're trying to achieve as a general plan.
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Campanella, yes, we can definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, okay. All right. Mr. Bolton, if you'd like to continue.
Oh, wait a minute, I had a question myself. One of the slides refers to the Non-Residential Development Program restrictions as being in its infancy. It started in 1989. The first 20-year program.
Mayor Lodge?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, this is specific to the GMP that became effective on April 1st, 2013, so we didn't look at measure E.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, if you'd like to continue, Mr. Bolton.
All right, thank you. So shifting the focus now to residential development activity, I think this is one of the more interesting charts in the report, and there's kind of a lot going on here, so I just kind of want to walk through first what the colors are. So the gray is what shows all the pending applications or pending projects. So what those are, are any housing projects that's been submitted to the city but does not yet receive the requisite land use approvals. Then in the kind of aqua blue color, we have the approved projects, and those are ones that have done, met those approvals but not yet received a building permit. And then the red are all projects that have received a building permit but have not yet completed their construction, received a certificate of occupancy. And then black are everything that has met that finished construction and has been built and occupied. So those first three, the pending, approved, and building permit comprise what we describe as the pipeline. And the way this is structured is that if something's pending in a certain year and it still is pending the next year, it shows up in both of those. So what this shows would be a snapshot as of each year, what was the amount of housing activity at that period in time. So it gives a pretty super consistent metric over time. And what we see is that over the last 20 years, development has been cyclical. Right now, we're pretty clearly in a period of high activity. And with 2018, there's still four months left in the year as of the reporting period, and we have nearly met the amount of activity that's in 2017, and it's anticipated that it will be higher than that. And so the question here is what's been driving this activity? What's been driving that bump from about 2013 up to now? And when we delve in a little deeper, we see in a large part, this is due to the average unit size density incentive programs. And there's that pretty clear increase from 2013 up to the first quarter of 2017. And since then, we see this kind of leveling off to a bit of a taper. And that gets to that question earlier about some of the projects have been revised, expired, withdrawn. And we see that especially if you look at the pending category, which is that gray at the bottom, that's gone down while is the approved has gone up a little bit, which signifies that those initial projects are starting to move through, or they've expired or withdrawn or what have you. The other thing that's been driving this increase in activity is shown here. And what this is, is it's very similar to that first graphic, but instead of showing the number of housing units, instead what it shows is the number of housing projects. And we see that same sort of cyclical activity with that bump in the early to mid 2000s till a drop in the 2012 or so, and then that increase again, but then that huge jump from 2016 to 2017. And this in large part is due to the changes in state law related to the accessory dwelling units. And so when we look at that, for instance, in 2018, just in this portion of the year, accessory dwelling units compromise 69% of all activity. So that includes housing projects that are in the pipeline or that are built and occupied, and that's 375 projects. So each of these projects only includes one unit because by definition, you're adding one accessory dwelling unit. So it has a less of an impact in the overall unit count, but it's still fairly substantial. So as a percentage of all of the units for 2018 that are either in the pipeline or built and occupied, it comprises 23% of those. And this is a fairly large shift from the amount of production we've seen historically about accessory dwelling units, where on average, we had about two a year. So it's marked a pretty significant shift.
Excuse me, Mr. Bolton. Commissioner Schwartz, you had a question?
Mr. Bolton, while, let's go back to, let's go back to the, what slide is this? Maybe 26. While I agree with you, and we can certainly see that housing applications and production are cyclical, I recall a very important piece of information that Ms. Brooke has shared with us before, and I've asked for it before, but I don't think that it's present, and that's, on average, the percentage of approved housing applications that are never built. And Ms. Brooke is nodding, so thank you, thank you for acknowledging that. This, to me, is an important part of the education of city decision-makers. Just looking at applications deemed complete, applications that receive their certificates of occupancy, doesn't tell the full story. And I think as we're looking at amending policies, as we're going into next year, phase two of the AUD ordinance amendments, that's an important piece of education for decision-makers to have. So I would ask that you include that in a presentation next Thursday at the joint hearing, and that we start to fold that into each of our housing policy hearings so that that important data point is, is right in front of us as we consider what we currently see on paper versus whatever is actually built on the ground. And then relative to RENA, I'll get to that in a little bit, meaning our RENA numbers.
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Schwartz, yes, I think that's a good point. And one of the things that goes along that lines, if you look, I mean, each year, there's a huge difference between the amount of pipeline, so that's all the color besides black relative to that black number. And so on average, there's 7.8 times as many units that are in the pipeline that are ever built and occupied in a given year. So we can look at that further.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for now.
Commissioner Campanella?
Just for an understanding, this is activity, but it says activity, but it's the, it's the balance at the end of the year on these slides of what categories various projects are in? It's not how many happen during the year, it's, it's what's outstanding at the end of the year? Is that correct? Their status?
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Campanella, no. So the way it works is if a project, the reason why this is useful and a bit of a shift from some of the ways we've reported it in the past is there's no double counting. So the way it works now is if a project comes in, you're right, that is the balance at the end of the year, but if a project comes in and goes from pending approved to building permit in the same year, it's only listed as building permit on here, if that makes sense.
No, that, that makes sense, but then let's say from year to year, the, are the once constructed, does that number of units drop off the bar chart for the next year?
Correct.
Okay. So gray, blue, red are balances at the end of the year. Black or constructed is what happened during that year, and we don't see it again. And that goes to some other chart to see what actually was constructed.
Yeah, Mayor Lodge, Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Campanella, that's correct. There's a separate chart that, there's in a backup slide, I can pull up if needed, but that shows the cumulative total of built housing units in the city, and then that then compares it to the EIR assumptions as well as the housing element.
Thank you, that clears that up. Thanks.
Okay. Continue, Mr. Bolton.
Okay, so while we've seen those increases in AUD for a period of time, and then that increase in the ADU, is one of the things that we've seen a bit of a tapering off of in terms of constructed housing is capital A affordable. And when we mean capital A, we're referring to housing that has some sort of price restriction on it. It's available to low, lower income, and then it goes up to middle or upper, or upper middle, I believe. And so we see this bump up around the 2010, 2012 timelines in terms of production, and then a pretty strong drop off since then, with no units produced in 2015 or 2016, only four in 2017, and then 40 as of the reporting date in 2018, and that was 510 North Salas Juarez for the people self-help. A lot of this is due to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. So moving forward, it's definitely going to be a little more difficult. If we shift our focus to look at the pipeline, though, we do see that there are quite a number of units that are in the pipeline and are considered capital A affordable. In fact, there's 257 of them, which is about 12% of all pipeline units. And then we also see that 58 units from Grace Village are anticipated to be online very soon, given that they have a temporary COO, and are anticipated to get a final COO very soon. So.
Excuse me, Mr. Bolton, you said Grace Vill, you said Grace Village? I thought it was completed.
Mayor Lodge, it, it has a temporary COO currently. So for the purpose of this graph, it would be considered still in the building permit issued phase, but you're correct that it has a temporary COO, and I think Mr. Gullett would like to add to that.
Thank you.
Chair Lodge, just to, just to clarify what's meant by affordable here, this is very low, low, moderate, and middle income restricted households.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Oh, Mr. Higgins, Commissioner.
Could you repeat that? So in other words, if you're using the term affordable with a capital A, it is either subsidized by a public agency or it's otherwise income restricted by inclusionary and then managed by the city? It's, it's, of those categories only?
Of those categories only, however they're built. So we do have nonprofits that build those as well, like people self-help housing.
Or Habitat for Humanity.
Habitat for Humanity.
That are voluntarily restricting them based on income.
Correct. And with the Average Unit Size Density Program, we've, we've seen rentals primarily. We haven't seen inclusionary requirements with Average Unit Size Density Program projects.
So are you distinguishing between affordable capital A and saying herein that AUD in the rest of this document is not affordable?
I am defining what affordable means in this chart. So this is just those four categories of income per household.
So capital A affordable is restricted or subsidized?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, one follow-on question, if I may, just on this same topic.
Commissioner Schwartz?
To staff, for those property owners who voluntarily are offering Section 8 rentals, is that counted in our numbers? I recently met a property owner, a private property owner who has Section 8 housing, and he's just voluntarily doing that. He's decided that that will be, those will be his rentals to Section 8 vouchered tenants.
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Schwartz, so that is, this shows completed new construction, so it wouldn't be based on that sort of thing.
You mean, so it doesn't show existing, not newly constructed? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Bolton? Did I understand you correctly? I don't mean to add any confusion.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge, hi. Madam Chair, Commissioner Schwartz. So what you're referencing is accounted for in our housing element in terms of overall the city's full body of affordable housing and Section 8 units that are housing people that have the Section 8 vouchers are included in that. But what Mr. Bolton presented here is newly constructed units that are otherwise restricted to certain income levels, not in the Section 8 program, but.
Yeah, and that's what I'm now understanding, only newly constructed. So if I could just say, what I think would be helpful to know, I don't know if it's for next Thursday or beyond, maybe as we get into, look ahead to phase two of the AUD hearings, is to know what we actually have already constructed and, in our community, and that is subsidized, affordable capital A, either through our nonprofit development organizations that Commissioner Higgins just identified, or other private property owners who on their own voluntarily are renting in part or exclusively to Section 8 vouchered tenants. So that we have a full picture, not just what's in the pipeline, but what percentage of our housing, our residential units in the city are being occupied by capital A affordable tenants or renters, if that, does that make sense, Mr. Bolton and Mr. Gullett? Thank you. I think that's, that would be a part of this pie that we're, you know, that we're looking at to better understand the whole. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Campanella?
On that point, if I can, looking at this chart, we have in our material a chart for, a similar bar chart by year that shows total built and occupied housing. Do you have a, do you perhaps have a slide on that or in your backup? This would be on page, I'm sorry, folks, this would be on page 48 of our package. There's a chart for that shows total built and occupied housing units, same type of bar graph as the affordable. So just to confirm, this includes affordable as well?
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Campanella, correct. This is all types of built and occupied housing units for each of these years.
Okay. So in response to Commissioner Schwartz's comment, if I do the math correctly, we were averaging, the total annual production for affordable averaged 52 units per year chart over the period 2008 through August 2018, 52 units. If this chart is, includes it, the average is 98, which means we have produced more affordable capital A units than market units in the city for this period of time. Am I correct?
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Campanella, yes, I mean, that's true, especially you see those bumps in 2010 and 2015, and those bumps correlate pretty well to that affordable chart. It is not directly comparable, though, in terms of how the units are counted. So this is showing net new units, whereas the affordable is counted as a total unit, so it doesn't include the loss of units relative to that, which gets a little confusing sometimes. They're not one-to-one perfectly directly comparable, but you're right, that a large portion of the built and occupied units during this time period are affordable.
Okay, I'd like to do is see, have this chart available for Thursday, because I think it's important. We have, what is it, SB 35 that we're, and I think the reason we're under that, like a lot of other municipalities, is that we're not producing enough above-market units. Is that correct? The reason that we're, or am I mistaken?
Mr. Bolton?
Commissioner Campanella?
Mayor Lodge, Commissioner Campanella, yes, I mean, that's definitely part of it, but it's not just the above-moderate, it's also, if you look at the RENA numbers, we're low on all of the low categories the last couple of years.
No, I understand we are, but for SB 35 purposes, the reason we're subject to it specifically is not producing enough above-moderate. Is that correct?
Hi, Madam Chair and Commissioner Campanella. SB 35, the reason that we're subject to the streamlining provisions of SB 35 is because we are not producing, like most communities in California, not producing enough of what Mr. Bolton described as the affordable, capital A affordable housing units. Looking at our quantified objectives for our housing element, we're actually on track to produce what we anticipate in terms of market rate housing units, but we are not producing enough capital A affordable units. And so therefore, we're subject to the streamlined provisions.
Okay. I would like to have this, just so we know, you know, that we are producing affordable. Until this 2017, 18, we weren't really doing, you know, we were being out. Until this 2017, 18, we weren't really doing, you know, we were being outpaced by the affordable units, let's say, in the city. I think it would be important to see that. I think a lot of people think there's hundreds of market units that are being produced, and we're not really paying attention to affordable. And I think it would be good to illustrate both components, not just affordable, if we can.
Okay. Mr. Campanella?
You and I have another one, if I can. Anybody, I don't want to...
I don't see anybody else's slides.
I guess I do. If I can go to chart 27. That's the quarterly units, AUD units. Yes, that's, chart 27 was, pardon me, folks, slide 27, I'm sorry. Pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. Slide 27, cumulative AUD units. Okay. So the stagnation that we spoke about, and I'm going to be kind of frank on this one, okay? What impact did potentially a 125 unit per year cap, which came out during this period? Do we know what that might have affected either new applications when it was proposed? I know it's not there anymore. But during the period that it was being proposed, before it was not, did this have an impact on new applications that we know of, that we get feedback from people, that it was, you know, that they were not either applying or they were falling out of the system due to that possibility?
Ms. Brook. Yes, you might as well move up front.
Commissioner Campanella, I can only speak anecdotally to that and applicants that we spoke to during the time that those conversations were occurring. There was definitely some hesitation in making applications for AUD projects because there was discussion about an annual limit on building permits issued for AUD units. However, since then, I can't speak specifically to why we've seen a stagnation. It would be interesting to know. I do know that there was great interest in the program at the outset. Obviously, there's development incentives for rental housing in particular, and there were certain opportunity sites in the city that were sought after quickly to develop AUD units. So I'd be speculating to say why we're seeing a stagnation in the number of applications, but it would be interesting to talk to some developers and see if there's other things potentially going on in the market or, you know, cost of land or what it might be.
Okay. Yeah, I think at this point, it's not, it's not going forward. I mean, it says here on page 61, if I have it, I guess I do. The City Council did not direct staff to further study this annual cap. That's on page 61, first paragraph's last line. So that's, that's no longer on your, as an item to be pursued? And I guess are applicants aware of that, that it's no longer an item and it's not being considered?
Commissioner Campanella, I can't say for sure whether or not applicants know that or not. We didn't make a public announcement about that. There was a City Council hearing where it was presented and staff recommended against it. City Council took that recommendation, did not initiate a zoning ordinance amendment to initiate it. So it was publicly discussed, and we were not directed to continue any further work on that. But in terms of whether or not the general public knows or applicants know, I haven't, it hasn't come up in conversations that I've had with applicants in well over a year.
And then new regulations came out recently this year, which we have to be aware of, I guess, on what we can, I guess, do or not do relative to policies like that. We have to pay attention to the Housing Accountability Act and as far as our recommendations and actions, I guess.
Correct.
As we heard at a prior meeting. We have to be conscious of that, not just us, but I mean, in recommendations we make and in actions that the City Council may take. Correct?
Correct. There's since been new legislation that would actually make it very challenging for us to argue why we'd be limiting through building permit issuance or otherwise be limiting housing development.
Okay. So when we start looking at recommendations, you know, it's another consideration as we get, as we have various aspects that come before us, I would guess we have to be made aware of potentially there's something that we may want to do a certain way so we wouldn't be in conflict with state laws. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what the question was.
As we see Phase Two, for example, as we see pieces of Phase Two.
Right.
We have to make sure the way we approach it, the way we try to initiate it, the recommendations we make to City Council, that we're not violating any of these new laws.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bolton, if you'd like to continue, please.
Thank you. Okay. So to tie all it together, then, in the housing section, when we looked at everything in a broad brush, we see that housing activity, we're in a, we're in a high portion of activity. But when we looked at what the EIR assumed build-out would be, we see that we're within those assumptions. When we looked at the housing element quantified objectives, which aren't so much objectives, but more so an expectation of the amount of housing that would be built based on historic trends during the housing element's eight-year period, we see that we're within those as well. So it's just something that we want to keep monitoring through these future reports to see how well that holds up, because we do also have about 1,600 units in the pipeline. And as we've discussed a little earlier, not all of those will be built, but more, some of those will be as we move forward in time. We also want to continue to monitor the location of development. So one of the things that we noticed in this report is historically about 18% of units built and occupied each year are in single-family zones. But due to this shift in the accessory dwelling units, that's been about doubled. And in 2018 so far, 41% of built and occupied housing units have been in single-family zones. So this runs a little contrary to that focus we discussed a little earlier about trying to put housing in the downtown areas, sometimes at the expense of non-residential development. And we also want to continue to monitor affordable housing. We've already discussed this a little bit, but, you know, there's been these changes at the state law level with the housing package from them, the implications from SB 35. So it's something we want to continue to support as much as we can and expand where feasible, and also just to do the best that we can to improve this issue of the jobs housing balance. And then the final recommendation was to proceed with the AUD program amendments as directed by the recommendations from the Housing Task Force and City Council and the program that's currently underway, and I believe will be back to you guys in about two weeks or so. So that was a lot to go through, both in Ms. Dicey's presentation and in mine. So I'm just going to provide a quick summary of the highlights that we've gone through. So in the general plan evaluation, these first two items are ones that we have discussed in previous general plan implementation and adaptive management program reports to update the Climate Action Plan and the EIR based on new information that we have now, new targets, new best practices, and changed conditions, including, you know, for the EIR, looking at changes in water supply potentially. What is new this time that we recommend is to update the environmental resources management element, and this is something that is already on our work program. But as Ms. Dicey mentioned, it's to build off of that momentum from the land use plan update, as well as changed environmental conditions and climate impacts. And then to update the safety element based on new climate information to consolidate those flooding impacts and to better integrate with our hazard mitigation plan. And then to consolidate and make consistent the flood policies throughout the general plan and the updates with the flood plan management ordinance. And then on the growth management side of things, the jobs housing balance remains to be an issue in this community. It's, there's been a bit of a stagnation perhaps from the EIR baseline, but over time, it's still gotten progressively worse. Non-residential development is occurring as intended and envisioned in the general plan in the direction provided by that. And housing activity is relatively high right now, but it's not above the general plan EIR assumptions or the housing element quantified objectives. And for the reasons mentioned, we should continue to promote affordable housing to the extent that we can. And so with that, we're here for any future questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. I have two questions, one from your report and one from the briefing. If you could go back to slide 26 and 27, I want to understand how we interpret the data that you're showing there. If you look at the category building permit and look at the numbers under each one of those bars in the bar graph, then look at the numbers under built and occupied, there's a lot more in the building permit category than the built and occupied category. So are we to assume that it really takes like 10 years to get through the process here in the city? How do we interpret the data that you're showing here? I assume that when you, when something gets a building permit, it stays in that category until a project is all finished. So it could be years, but it still, if you add up the areas under those two categories, it's really skewed towards the building permit side rather than the built and occupied. And I'm just wondering, how do we interpret the data here? What are we, what are we seeing? And that's the same on slide 27. It's even more so on 27, because you, you have several years where there's no built and occupied, but there's a lot of in the building permit category.
Mr. Bolton.
Chair Lodge, Commissioner Thompson, yes, that's true. I mean, there is definitely a delay between receiving a building permit and then going through final construction. Some of the projects are quite large and take a considerable amount of time, and other ones do end up their building permit may expire. They might decide to revise their projects and come back as something else. I'm not sure if my colleagues want to add to that, but, I mean, these are the numbers that have been in our system and, yeah.
Well, at the risk of suggesting a little more complexity in your slidesmanship here, you might show building permits issued only in the year the permit is issued, and then have a category for in, in construction. That might help to understand what all this data means. Okay, the other question I have is in the, in the report, and we didn't touch on it, you didn't touch on it here, but on page five, you're talking about identified priority work items, 2017, update the traffic model at regular intervals. Now, when this traffic model was proposed to us years ago, the discussion was that if we spent the money to get the traffic model built and in place, we could use it as a tool when we were evaluating projects and all that. But then here, you say the traffic model was last updated in 2016. Funding is collected to update the model at regular intervals. So what's regular intervals if it hasn't been updated in two years? And the whole idea was to update it so we could use it for project analysis.
Mr. Gullett.
Chair Lodge, Commissioner Thompson, there's a, there's a few different things going on with that. So the way that was set up was to create a funding source to, that is based on building permit fees that would fund regular, well, maybe regular is not the correct term for it, so periodic updates to the traffic model. So what, so once, once we reached a certain level where we could fund a new model run, we would do that and review projected impacted intersections versus previously projected impacted intersections. So, so that was done in 2016. So now we have SB 743 that we'll be grappling with as a city. So we need to move away from looking at level of service, so...
Does that mean the model's got to be changed?
The model can produce information about vehicle miles traveled. Mr. Bolton used that for the greenhouse gas inventory last year. So it could be used for that. We, we are also open to looking at a, at a different consultant and taking a different approach as we enter into the world of vehicle miles traveled for environmental review The city has to do that by July 1st, 2020, and this is a work effort we're going to be embarking on next year. So you'll be hearing more about that, and we anticipate more information on VMT and level of service coming through that conversation. And we're, we're rethinking our congestion policies as part of that, too.
Okay, so the bottom line, I guess, the traffic model isn't dead, it's just asleep for a while here. Regular intervals is more than two years.
More than two years, and, and we do, we do have funding for, for looking at traffic and vehicle miles traveled that we will be using.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you, Mayor Lodge. I really, I appreciate the report. I like the fact that you've forced us to look at the checklist that came out from OPR. I hadn't looked at that yet, so I think it's a pretty great tool, and I like the format of your report. And I was particularly interested in the section on education, given that we have, you know, this 800-pound gorilla up on the hill that doesn't get a lot of play, I think, in terms of our, the City College, getting a lot of play in our planning documents. I'm, I'm, I'm interested to see more of that included. So you're, you're, you know, referencing that here, but, you know, what's the plan to include more of all of this plus more? I mean, the bare minimum is to put City College and other schools on the map, but it also says, you know, future educational facility needs, details regarding joint use agreements. I know that, that information is out there somewhere in maybe another planning document, but when, when, are you going to be putting or getting into the City Colleges and the other private college housing needs within our land use plan, or land use element?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Higgins, we can certainly, when we update our next housing element, look at adding additional policies. We, we do coordinate over the years with City College, at least in terms of talking about housing opportunities near the college, if not on the campus. But we do have a policy right now in the housing element that says just that, that we coordinate with not only City College, but UCSB, other major educational institutional large employers to try to find housing for their staff, faculty, and students. So it's a broad policy, of course. If we wanted to get more into the details about that in terms of actual implementation actions, we could consider that when we next update one of the elements.
So I'm, you know, admittedly pretty naive on this stuff, but my frame of reference is UCSB's got a long-range development plan that I imagine, or if I recall correctly, outlines their housing needs, their residential development programs and demographic demands and whatnot. There is no such, there is no such parallel document for City College.
Mr. Higgins, I'm asking on the long-range staff here to help me answer this one. So City College does have what they call Public Works Plan. It's similar to UCSB's long-range development plan, subject to certification by the Coastal Commission. We do coordinate with City College on that. Their plan needs to be found consistent with our LCP. What I'm not sure is whether or not that plan gets into the issue of housing, and so I'm not...
Yep. My assumption is it doesn't, because there's this rhetoric out there in the community that we, you know, City College can't, you know, entertain or discuss housing. But, so seeing this here, no, maybe we can. So I guess that's my question, or my, my long-winded question. Can we do that for them? And I don't mean for them, but can we do that? Okay, at them. No, can, you know, there's a housing demand that we have been ignoring on paper, in our paper, in their paper. So now that the state OPR checklist has that listed as an item, can we take the bull by the horns and, and do that on somebody's behalf?
Commissioner Higgins, I think we can do that on, in terms of policies, land use designation, zoning designations for the private development surrounding City College. I don't think we would be able to go in and regulate what they can and cannot do on their property, whether they develop their property with housing.
Not suggesting that.
But we can talk about...
Yeah, I'm suggesting...
Where does it make sense? Where does it make sense?
There's a demand coming out of City College. What is it?
Right.
Some, some real basic, okay, here's their, the student population that's from this area that probably has family that they stay with. Here's what's coming from out of town, out of country that needs housing. How are we addressing that? Because they're not, they can't on campus until something dramatic changes, right? So maybe that's an opportunity for us. So, all right, so we kicked that one pretty good. The, maybe for Mr. Bolton, the way that the report is set up, you refer to the vision of a sustainable Santa Barbara, and then, and then, you know, that's really our, our three or four paragraph guiding principles on, on what we're doing here in the GMP, correct?
Chair Lodge, Commissioner Higgins? That's correct, yes. The primary focus on this when we're evaluating the success of the general plan is relating it back to that vision of a sustainable Santa Barbara.
So the housing bullet point there says at the bottom, allowing as much housing as possible within resource limits to provide a ray of lifestyle options for a demographically and economically diverse resident population. But the rest of the document talks about affordable housing with a capital A and not a capital A, but are driving policies, as much housing as possible with no affordable in perens or ahead of capital or otherwise. So I, I see where we, and, and you use, sorry to do this, you, you start to use the, the capital A affordable housing in the body of the document when, on the first page, under growth management. And I've never seen that used before, other than a section heading, the capital A. So it's not anywhere in our general plan, capital A, and I don't mean to get, you know, sort of grammatical here, but, but I think we are, our community is at a loss to define what affordable housing is, because we can't tell if it's workforce or moderate or inclusionary or restricted, and it gets highly technical. But if our, if our guiding policy talks about as much housing as possible within our resources, and then we just start going right into, and I think what you're, what you've done here is start to talk about a specific kind of restricted or subsidized housing, and maybe, maybe Commissioner Campanella was getting at this as well with the statistics, why isn't the other housing, as much housing as possible everywhere else, getting as much attention? I can clean up that question, but you can go ahead and respond, too.
Commissioner Higgins, let me know if this doesn't answer the question. There, there are some things in your question I do want to make sure we address, though just getting back to the definition of capital A affordable housing. It is defined in the general plan. I, I thought I had it with me, but I don't, but anyone can look in the definitions section of the general plan. Capital A affordable housing is in there. Within that definition, it does reference workforce housing. And so city staff, I can say, for, for a long time, has distinguished the general category of what we call affordable housing from capital A affordable housing, because what's affordable in Santa Barbara is very relative to people in the community, to other communities. And so we've, when we talk about providing housing in the community that's affordable to the people that live here, that's very different than saying, we've produced so many capital A affordable, you know, income restricted, somehow subsidized with public funds, affordable housing. So that's why when we use, when we capitalize the A, it's intentional in that, and we usually try to put in parentheses or a footnote what we mean by that. So I think that answers part of your question.
It, it does, and it, and it gets to my point that, that it seems as though we're, we're drifting from the fundamental direction in our sustainable Santa Barbara about housing to, to restricted housing or subsidized housing. And in, in between those is lowercase affordable, and in the circulation element, there's a, there's the definition, I'm sure it exists elsewhere, that's limited to low, moderate income housing, 30% of their gross annual salary, not, not by way of a subsidy or restriction.
Right.
And distinctly missing is workforce in that definition of, of affordable housing. So it's not, that's not there. Workforce isn't there, but low and middle is. But it doesn't, you know, the, the author here, the policymakers at that time didn't see it fit to drive the method to get that housing, which might be restricted or subsidized. But I guess I just, my point is, let's be clear about what it is we're talking about, because it's wildly misunderstood in our community about what affordable is. The conversation that Commissioner Schwartz was, was getting at has to do with Section 8 vouchers. And I understand that if, if an apartment owner wants to accept Section 8 vouchers from a tenant, that those are worth about $1,700 a month for a one-bedroom home, apartment, sorry. So, you know, we talk a lot about what we think ought to be affordable, and what materially is, as identified by the federal government, at $1,700 a month is not a far stretch from what we're seeing on the ground, at least now with new product, and it certainly already exists in our community now. That stock that was built in the 60s and 70s is affordable by any stretch. So including the federal government's use of the, of the voucher. So I just would like to get a better understanding in these documents that go on forever, planning documents, what, what it is that we're, we're using when we're using the word affordable. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Schwartz, and then Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you. First wanted to ask staff to, this is in our package, pages 51 and 52, and this is under residential development. On page 51, in the section recommendation, and it follows on to the next page as well, very important data that staff is producing here that references what we anticipated from the 2011 general plan and that EIR, which assumed a 2,795 net new dwelling unit construction over a 20-year timeline. Where are we? 34% of the planning period is completed, as staff notes, and here's the shocker, which should be, in my opinion, bold and underlined, only 25%, only one quarter of the assumed total units have been built. I think this should be on a slide all by itself, to tell you the truth, for Thursday, because I think the ongoing misrepresentation, dramatic misrepresentation, I don't need to identify, you know, those individuals come before the city to say, we have runaway development, we're out of control, our policies don't work, they were ill-conceived, far beyond our wildest dreams, the number of rental units being built. Let's revisit the actual data, and Mr. Bolton is our data guru. I'd suggest, Mr. Bolton, that for Thursday, we have some very clear, compelling slides that show the actual numbers, because I think there's misunderstanding, misrepresentation, and miscommunication as a result. So this is important, not only for people to see what the policies have yielded and our, and our processes and practices, it's not just the policies, it's actually how we've handled the applications, and how many years it, on average, it takes for a rental housing applicant to get their project through, all the way through to completion. But I think it grounds us in truth and fact as we look ahead to early next year's Phase 2 AUD amendments. So that's part of what I, when I've been querying Ms. Brooke about how, on average, how many of our housing units that have been approved with CFOs actually get constructed, this is part of that fact-based picture that I think is very important to continue to communicate among city decision makers, as well as communicating out to the public. So I would appreciate that being folded into the PowerPoint presentation for the Thursday Joint Planning Commission Council session. Then I wanted to ask you, I'm sort of multitasking. Ms. Vaughn was kind enough to give us a printout, what's now on the city's website, which is the staff report for next Thursday for our joint work session. As we look at the spreadsheet for existing and future planning division major work efforts, I was wondering if staff has begun prioritizing or recommending prioritization by what we're obligated to work on under various state laws versus what our own kind of values and policy and local preferences are. So we can desire to work on, to, you know, to, to put resources to work, certain work efforts, and then we have mandates from the state, and they continue to flow in greater numbers, especially in the housing arena, in the, each year, and including what Governor Brown just signed into law that will go into effect January 1. What I can't tell, what I can't tell from this chart, and now with a brand-new set of housing bills that Governor Brown signed into law, whether we're educating and expressing to the decision makers who will be at the table next Thursday, here's what we have to do under state law. It's not an option. Whether we have it in our general plan, or we have workshops and the community wants us to do something, we have to under state law. This is like the top shelf stuff, and then we can look at everything else that we think is important for the community and our community tells us is important. I'm going to stop there. Can you help me understand how we're prioritizing based on legally what we must address versus what we'd like to address, kind of on all of that list? Because I can't tell from the, the spreadsheet if we've actually prioritized to ensure we, we allocate the resources to what we're obligated to under state law. State law is plural, I should say.
Certainly.
Ms. Brooke?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Schwartz, the chart I believe you're referring to, if it's the same one I have in front.
Attachment 1 in the, in the staff report for next Thursday.
So generally, those work efforts are divided into three categories. At the top, it's called ongoing efforts, and that's really our monitoring program, the adaptive management program and the AUD program monitoring. Those are ongoing. The largest category of major work efforts on that chart is called general plan implementation slash EIR mitigation.
Yes.
So there, those are listed under there as an identifier that there's some impetus, there's, there's a reason why they're on the list. It's either implementing the general plan, what we envisioned, or it's a required mitigation by the, from the EIR. And then there's other work efforts, and those are any number of items that come up from time to time that do often rise to a priority level but are not mandated by any law or by any policy document or environmental document. So we have been making more of an effort in the last couple of joint work sessions with City Council and Planning Commission when we really dive deep into our major work efforts and how we prioritize those, and we did that last in April of this year. And I did highlight at that time those that we thought were a higher priority, either because we saw that certain documents needed to be updated imminently, or in the case of Senate Bill 35, that was handed to us, and we know that we need to address that. So that became a high priority that City Council directed us to work on, and so it does show as an existing work effort. So we have been attempting to do that, and I'll make more of an effort to do that, too, as we go forward into the spring and, and look again at prioritizing our work efforts or how we even consider these new recommended work efforts that you just heard today, how those fold into what was directed for us in April. We'll look at that again in April. Next week, we were not intending to dig deep into reprioritizing our major work efforts because we're only six months into the direction that Council gave us since April.
Right.
I do want to give a status update on where we are, and then get some direction as to whether or not we add more, but understanding there's no funding, resources, they're not programmed, but that we can consider how we prioritize those when we return to the joint meeting in April again. And we can certainly lay out at that time, these are state mandates, this is a priority for this reason, this is imminent, we need to update whatever element in the general plan, or, and then who knows what other legislation we'll have by that time, too.
Or maybe just bold.
Excuse, excuse me a moment. Ms. Vaughn, could you put this on the overhead projector, so anyone who's watching will have some vague idea, since it can all be legible because of the size of it.
And again, for, for the public that's watching, it is on the, this has been uploaded to the city's website now, I believe, or will be within 15 minutes, within 15 minutes. But certainly after this afternoon, decision makers and the general public can go to the city's website and find this staff report. And I'm not suggesting, by the way, Ms. Brooke, that, you know, you or staff on their own reprioritize just to call out or bold or somehow designate visually the items that really rise above perhaps other items, because there will be consequences for us based on state laws if we don't apply resources in a timely way. They may not be immediate, but as we know, as we look at this every six months, it rolls over from fiscal year to fiscal year, if we get behind on preparing for compliance, and that could include, we talk about the Housing Accountability Act, that could include proper training, and Mr. Vincent knows this is hot button for me, training of all of our city decision makers to understand how to comply with just that one act, the Housing Accountability Act. There's so many more that, you know, staff will have to undertake, well, including the City Attorney's Office, to educate us on, so that we are staying within the goalposts of, of what the law requires on a project-by-project or policy-by-policy basis. So here, Vice Chair Lodge has asked that we put this up there. This is the matrix that we'll all be looking at next Thursday and that staff.
On the right are the different subject areas, and the top are ongoing efforts, those are the, the green. The yellow are, I can't, I can't read it from here myself.
Existing work efforts are the gold and, yeah, the gold or yellow.
Yeah. Blue, gray?
Future.
I mean, we have such a long list, everybody knows.
We have a longer list of both required and desired than we have resources, which is why we undertake this effort every six months, is to continue to recalibrate our priorities, and staff works as hard as, as humanly possible to accomplish all that. So I don't know, Ms. Brooke, if there's a, I, I will all stop there. I didn't know if there was anything else you might want to add, but I think, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Vincent.
If I could add a little bit, just so that both the commission, members of the public who either participate or don't participate in this process but are watching, the Housing Accountability Act is not a new piece of legislation. In fact, the, the provisions of the Housing Accountability Act that, that I've been providing advice to both you and, and the boards and commissions on, particularly regarding the findings required for the, a reduction of density in a, in a housing project or even a denial of a project, those provisions have been in the Housing Accountability Act. I was just searching back to historic drafts of the legislation. It goes back at least to 2005. So this isn't a new requirement. What, what has happened for the city is that up until the incentives that were granted or proposed or adopted as part of the affordable, sorry, average unit size density program, the, the city generally wasn't seeing projects of a size that started to strain the city, the community's senses of compatibility and what was allowed under, under approved zoning. The set of incentives, the set of standards that were adopted under AUD has created a circumstance where the zoning calls out certain allowances, projects are coming in, taking advantage of those allowances, and then the questions of compatibility are creating this conflict between the zoning allowances and what the decision makers are willing to accept or approve as part of their sense of compatibility with the built environment. You take that conflict and you take the findings that are required by the Housing You take that conflict and you take the findings that are required by the Housing Accountability Act, and it puts the city in a difficult position because the findings that are necessary in order to reduce density or to deny such projects are not supported by the record that we've seen so far, in the sense that we're not seeing average unit-sized density program projects creating conflicts with public health and safety. They're creating issues that are typically found in the rubric of public welfare. And so there's the conflict that I would suggest the decision-makers consider, think about, and wrestle with, that we have zoning standards and incentives, but we haven't come to fully accept them or incorporate them into what we view as the future of the city of Santa Barbara. And so it's not that this is new legislation, but it's bringing an issue that, in my experience, has been part of Santa Barbara's development experience as long as I can remember, well, as long as I've worked for the city, certainly, that's almost 23 years, and as long as I've been sentient to these issues, which goes back to about 1980. So that's, you know, I just wanted to help frame it, and also just so that, because I was hearing some commissioners talk about new legislation and changes, this is one of those things, it's been out there for a long, long time, and that the policies that were put in place with AUD just brought this issue to a head for Santa Barbara.
I appreciate that context, and I didn't want to go back into that and reference that, but I think you've really pinpointed the, kind of the trigger and the tensions, Mr. Vincent, and that's why in part I'm, or in large part, I'm underscoring the importance of the education or the training of whatever needs to be kind of pushed to the decision-makers to be more informed and better prepared to make the kinds of both policy decisions and project-based decisions. And I think, quite frankly, if I may be so bold as to say, this played out at an ABR hearing that I attended in recent weeks where Assistant City Administrator Tava Osteringer did a fabulous job trying to train the ABR on the Housing Accountability Act and how to stay within the goalposts, and it was quite a challenge. It was very new information for them, even though this act was not new. But yes, it was new for them to understand, and I think for all decision-makers, maybe even it will be a surprise at City Council at some point to understand the new goalposts, defining goalposts in which we find ourselves in making findings of approval or denial on housing projects. So I'll leave it at that, and I appreciate, let me just, I do want to end with a note of appreciation to staff. This is a significant substantive, important document. I appreciate all of the work. I can't even imagine how much work went into preparing this document and preparing for next week, so I thank you, and I look forward to that joint work session.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You'll be next.
I would echo Commissioner Schwartz's last comments there, but I'm not quite so eloquent. This thing's a monster. I actually saw Dan in the hallway before the thing, and I was just saying, this is something that just probably sucks the life out of you to keep going through this reporting period and watching data and grabbing data, and what do you grab, what do you not grab? And so I think it certainly improves with every iteration. In the second half of the report, one, if you would have joined us for lunch today, we had plenty of time, which of course annoys the city attorney because we get off into other discussions on other things, but we did talk about the, the, the method on how we're actually determining things are working or not working, and in reference particularly to the survey, post-occupancy survey related to the AUD program. And if we could have, some Housing Task Force people could have done it again, maybe waiting a year was too long, maybe having the city do it with the residents was the wrong thing. It's clear to me, I think earlier to one of Commissioner Schwartz's comments again, that there are victories out there to be seen in connection with pursuing the goals of the general plan. This document just kind of lays out numbers and doesn't really have any opinion in it, doesn't really wave the flag on whether things worked out well, things worked out bad. It just shows the numbers and says, take those numbers and throw them against some numbers that we had for a goal. And I would suggest that a, an appropriate adjustment to this at this time would be not to wait for a year, but to wait until things were just fully occupied. So the Marx fully occupied, the Arlington Village has all of its, all of its one-bedroom and studios fully occupied. It might have, if it's 30-some or 40 units, it might be 75% or 80% occupied. John probably knows more because he goes to bed with these reports under his pillow, I think. But it just seems to me that continuing to wait longer does disservice to both sides of the argument, whether there's problems out there or where there's actually things that have resulted that are really, really good. And then looking back on that, too, I think John and I talked, too, I think we're kind of frustrated on some of the, the lack of, the lack of information that we will actually get in some of those questions, and that there are property owners, not necessarily tenants, but property owners out there that are willing to share, that would have more information that's on those survey forms, and do so confidentially, not give up who it is we're talking about or what in particular, but can give you demographic information. And so it just seems to me that continuing to follow that path both, I guess, emboldens the detractors and emboldens the supporters without data. It's just a emotional response still, that the town's either doing really good on housing or going to hell, one or the other, but there's nothing tangible, even though we see tangible opportunities on the ground right now. And so that would be one of my suggestions. Overall, as I see more of these, I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm saddened that staff is not a bigger cheerleader or opinion-maker. And I don't work for the city, you do, so I get that, but I see a report like this, but I don't see a lot of effort going, other than the recommendations that are clearly just have a nexus to a state requirement or a reporting requirement. I don't really see any determination by staff in saying, this, we see, we think we're going in the right direction on this and we should pursue it more, pursue this one less, or the example I just gave, why don't we get out and do some surveys now when we know these places are full because we can accomplish some better data thing? I guess what I'm really saying is I wish you'd take more chances in the staff report to really push the proactive actions on known issues, concerns, or achievements, rather than just put vanilla data in front of people and then let them do it. Sitting over there are six people who probably have 120 or 30 years' worth of experience in this, in this stuff, okay? And you'll, when you sit there in front of council, you'll still have that much experience over those group of people, too. And it just seems to me we're missing part of, part of that expertise in the end product. And then one last question, so my, my little tangential ideas on a social equity element, broadband and telecommunications and the circulation or safety part of the document, and whether we're water compliant, is that just something I bring up next week and see if there's any traction? Is that what's appropriate? Or do I just, or do I just leave those comments with you for me to remember in six months You drew straws and Mr. Gullett's on it.
Yeah, I was going to, I was just going to ask, Mr. Gullett, did you get the short straw?
Yes, I have one. So we do this joint meeting every, every six months, so we'll be reconvening after next week in April, so giving us direction of what you would like us to consider in April and consider what it would take to get such things done would be useful.
I know, as we talked before, it's a resources versus ideas situation, but it would be appropriate to mention it again next week if I feel strongly about it.
Yes.
Is that the idea of this meeting is just kind of vet this stuff early and get ready for next week, right?
Right, and next week's a conversation, and it includes our electeds.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Ms. Vaughn reminded me that I neglected to open public comment, but not seeing any members of the public present. We will move on. Commissioner Campanella?
And I had, we exchanged some, I did exchange some emails with staff on this, but I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the rest of the commission, especially those that were not on the task force. On page 61, under Phase 2, the fifth bullet down, Phase 2 includes considering parking increases outside of downtown, and I wanted to make sure everybody was clear on what that entailed, number one. And number two, is it actually in the workflow efforts chart that we've seen? Was it approved back in April? Page 61, Phase 2, fifth bullet, considering parking increases outside of downtown.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Campanella, I appreciate the question. So the list you're referring to on page 61 of the report is where we break out our various phases for amending the AUD program ordinance as directed by council. And it's further explained in the report why we're doing it in phases. I won't get into that unless there's questions, but the bullet regarding considering parking increases outside of downtown, that I believe is with respect to considering additional parking requirements for units over a certain square footage or over a certain bedroom count, I believe, outside of the central business district. And it will be something that's considered as part of the Phase 2 ordinance amendments to AUD. For better or worse, my paraphrasing of the issues that are included in each phase of the AUD that's on that report, or the graph that was just up on the screen earlier, does not encompass everything that we'll be considering. This list is more comprehensive in your report than is shown on the major work efforts just merely because of space, but we intend to work on everything that City Council directed us to work on. That's where we get our direction from, and that particular issue was initiated by council at one of the previous meetings where they directed amendments to the AUD program.
Okay, so what we're talking about is specifically, is this, we're talking about where and how possibly, or consider that a unit larger than 700 square feet is going to require one and a half parking spaces versus one parking space under the AUD if it's 700 feet or less.
Correct. That was a recommendation of the Housing Task Force that was carried forward to the City Council, and City Council included that in their motion to staff that initiated ordinance amendments with the whole package returning to the Planning Commission for further consideration. That issue has not yet come to your commission. What you saw five or six weeks ago, I believe, was the increasing the requirement for parking for three or more bedroom units outside of the central business district with the requirement to have a minimum of two parking spaces. That you saw and recommended forward to council. That'll be going to ordinance committee in November.
Yeah, the reason I mention it is because I don't think, it may not have been clear to the other commissioners based upon staff report, et cetera, and attachments that we had on that meeting for Phase 1.
Okay.
That this was part of the package. I think that occurred on the February 13 meeting, which we didn't have a copy of. So we weren't, it's sort of unaware that that particular item is there. Importantly, I guess, is that it's going to be studied, that it's not, because without getting into a discussion on it, we all know it's a significant item. So there will be specific study on that that would come back with why and where for us, and that's not already been decided. That's something that would have to be supported to us when it comes back to us, the reason for doing that, correct, making that change.
Commissioner Campanella, yes, we would have staff recommendation and reasons to recommend one way or the other on that. I believe that the Housing Task Force had a memo from transportation planning staff before them that helped inform their recommendation in that regard, but we would refresh that or not if necessary before the item comes to you.
Well, I'm talking about a study. You know, I was, I was not at that meeting, and I don't want to beg off because I was a member of the Housing Task Force. I did memorialize my comments for that meeting since I was out of the country, but I think we heard testimony, okay, that we should consider as well, and I think it's important that that be reviewed at a public meeting where we do have the people that could be affected by it on that particular one. And I'm concerned if we're just relying on the report that was put out at that meeting to make that decision and not actually do more involved, including public input into that before we decide.
Commissioner Campanella, in order to increase the parking requirements, we'll require a zoning ordinance amendment. We would certainly have a public hearing on that at the Planning Commission Ordinance Committee and City Council. So yes, that is, again, it's on our future Phase 2 amendments to the AUD ordinance, like any other amendment, would be heard at a public hearing.
Okay. We did have a lot of comments on that particular item at Housing Task Force, as you probably know from the technical people who are dealing with applications. So appreciate that that gets in-depth review and also that it's noticed so we get the people out who are most affected by it, could be most affected by it. Thank you. Are we ready for comments or any more questions?
Well, I think it's been a combination of comments.
Okay. I want to thank you for providing the weeds for me to dig into. You used the word robust, so I didn't want to disappoint anybody as far as this review. I think I had sent a memo out probably one day before we got our package, hoping that we were going to look at trends and not just points in time, to give us an idea on how things were going, to help us look at and maybe analyze or anticipate what we need to look at going forward. And I really appreciate that you provided that, as far as the housing part of this and residential development, but especially the housing, to see the types of questions that we have to be concerned about and not just look at static numbers, but where were we and possibly where we're going. I appreciate that. As far as the adaptive management plan, you guys are pros. I mean, it's just wonderful the way you put it together. You complied with OPR requirements. I can see why those requirements were there, to really make it easy to understand and really give continuity to the way that various municipalities report, because this climate action plan and others, aspects of it, it affects all of us, it's not just one community. So I'm glad we're all now consistently trying to put it together, and I think you guys did a great job, and appreciate your reference on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Campanella. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll mix this up further and just ask another question, key off of Commissioner Jordan's comments. Why was this, why is this item not, why is it a receive and file and not a motion to move it forward? What's the format history on that?
Ms. Brook?
Commissioner Higgins, that's a good question. It's been, to date, it's been used to analyze the general plan, whether or not what we see on the ground is actually implementing the general plan as intended, and it's a report back. We do, as part of it, make recommendations for where we think we could be doing better, and that's where those potential work efforts come out. We could update the safety element, we could update the land use element, but we tend to consider those types of work. to consider those types of work efforts in the context of the overall planning division's We could structure it differently. We typically would do that with the Planning Commission and the City Council at the same time, so that, I mean, you could, in the future, if we agendize it differently, the Planning Commission could make a more formal recommendation to City Council, that then we take the City Council at some point and see if they direct staff to do that. It's possible we could do it that way. We've tended to do it where the commission and council are together in the same room and hearing each other and having a deliberation together and then asking council to decide at that time if something becomes a priority for us.
All right. So, the reason I ask is because I, no surprise, I couldn't tell exactly where Commissioner Jordan was coming from, but I appreciated what he was saying. And that, and that, I think he was trying to encourage you to advocate more, but then he, at the end politely, also wanted to kind of chime in with some recommendations, very politely. And, and so, and in context of how this is set up, we see it, and then boom, right away, council and Planning Commission gets to see it. So, coming from a place of just, you know, protocol, or maybe just being annoyed that I have to go to two meetings for the same thing, I was wondering how that came to be. If this were a project on a path like ABR, like a design project, and it was then going somewhere else, there'd be enough room in between the two bodies hearing it to accept one body's comments or changes in the form of a motion, or at a minimum, the minutes from that meeting before it got to the next step on the process. And so, I guess what I'm concerned with is that, I don't even think it's a concern, it's just a conclusion, this could have more advocacy in it if it were put in the form of a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And I see, just call it a commentary at this point, I see how things can be really mixed up and jumbled and hard to get clear guidance on it from, in that forum that is the joint PC, City Council work session, and especially this coming one where we're not even talking about all the other items. I think the chart that you showed really isn't even up for discussion so much unless anybody just sort of hijacks the meeting and makes it. So, any response to that, or none if you don't want to?
I think I might be able to add a little more context to why it may seem that we're not forcefully putting out a recommendation at this point. Couple of reasons. One, it's the, it's the time of year. It's October. We're not currently in a budget cycle. We're not in the, although others may be currently starting to propose the city's next year fiscal budget, we are not yet doing that. We, so that's why we've tended to have more of those types of discussions in the spring joint meeting, because we're in the thick of budget discussions and it's on City Council's mind at that time. Where do these prioritized work efforts fall in line with everything else that's being requested at the time by other departments? And so, similarly, I can say, we as staff would not, outside of that normal budget process, push very hard toward making a recommendation to encumber the City Council to spend money or allocate money outside of the budget process. And that's just...
But we could, the Planning Commission could. We can initiate zoning ordinance amendments, et cetera.
Certainly.
So, some of what I see up here is from, you know, in particular, Commissioner Schwartz, her comments about state legislation, et cetera, where we need to be landing pretty quickly with respect to more state housing legislation that's coming. And in my opinion, we need to be working on our historic districting and those historic resource programs and design guidelines, and they're not even on the chart. I mean, they're in the blank, there's no color associated with those. So, that's, to me, what I would, I would hope we could take away with more advocacy from either you or the Planning Commission on what, what to be working on. And I guess, I don't, it sounds like, you didn't say this, and you may not even have meant it, but it sounds to me like you don't necessarily want advocacy at this point, because you don't want us to disagree with you or otherwise redirect you from where you think you need to be headed, but what's, what's the job of the Planning Commission and then the City Council at that point? And I don't mean that to sound sort of surreptitious, it's just that I don't, my only experience with how to direct staff on, on workload was in a, in an objective way, and you didn't even ask for it really, was when Mayor Schneider simply just polled everybody, and we took a series of votes about which project got the most, and she was X-ing the ones, and that was how to, and it didn't seem, outside of anything else, that was a good scientific method, but it didn't, it seemed awkward to me at the time. So, and now we don't even have that other than your recommendations, so.
I think that's a fair comment, and going into the next joint meeting in the spring, I think we can discuss with the Planning Commission whether we come to you in advance of that joint meeting and have a discussion about our workload priorities and whether or not Planning Commission gives a formal majority-type recommendation for what you would have be our priorities, and then carry that forward to City Council. So, I'm open to that discussion.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Thompson, you light us on?
Thank you. One final comment. About 10 years ago, when two of us that were on the General Plan Update Subcommittee of the Planning Commission proposed to Betty Weiss and John Ledbetter this system of feedback of the general plan that became called Adaptive Management Program, I don't think we had any idea that it would grow into being such a formal and well-documented feedback program. I want to congratulate the staff for taking ownership of that concept and really growing it into being a very useful work product. As I said, we didn't, we thought feedback would be beneficial, whereas in the past it wasn't. The general plan just sat on the shelf and nobody ever read it. We thought that it needed to be reviewed periodically to make it a viable document, and you guys certainly have done that. And so, I want to give you a great kudos for having this product out, and you're doing great work. So, with that, I think it's, it's good to go with this to the council next week, even though what some of my colleagues are proposing here that maybe we ought to have more forceful recommendations to go along with it. I think that there'll be some recommendations come out of that meeting next week, like always happens, so. Thanks very much, and we'll, we'll delve into this more next week.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Jordan?
Thanks. So, just to, if I rambled incoherently, just to kind of clear up what I think I was saying, as an example, we have people who have moved into rental units and we have no data. And you guys know that, we know that, we're concerned about that. I guess what I would appreciate more when we get to these things is thinking that you guys think that's a concern and raising that to a level of, is that a concern that should be addressed by an opinion from the Planning Commission or not? Another example would be a decrease in AUD rental development units and an increase in ADUs. No, no opinion there. You could say, is that good or bad, and probably have an argument up here, half and half, right? But, but there, but obviously, we have sailed on the boat of AUDs, and now there's a blip and a decrease. So, does that warrant a look at, well, why? What do we do? Where do we put it? How do we re-incentivize it? Restart that to get it back going? Because on the general plan timeline, as we discussed this morning, we're still going to end up with less units developed than we said in the general, general plan. So, we're, we're falling behind again. Same thing with ADUs. They've spiked. Is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? Are we seeing, are we seeing that that's something we should further incentivize or draw back on? You know, I have an opinion. Everybody else has an opinion. But those are all in this thing and in this report, and my concern is, by the time you get to next week and you have your two and a half minutes at 14 people after, after staff presentation, you know, there, there's all kinds of characterizations of what that meeting really resembles, but it's not really a productive work session. So, those are the kind of, those are three examples there of just what I, what I think, and you go through this exercise, and what should be the result of the exercise to start to be a little proactive? Because you guys live with this data and the impacts of it, or the achievements of it, much more intimately than we do. And I would, I guess, encourage you to take that step out more, rather than just put together a report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Some questions of my own, followed by some comments. Slide 21 has approximately 35,500 workers commute into the city. Does that include everybody who lives outside the city limits? So, is everybody on the South Coast as well as from further away? Mr. President?
Chair Lodge, I believe that is everyone who commutes into the city. I don't believe that's specific to the South Coast, but I can double-check that.
I'm sorry, what was that last?
I believe it is, it would include someone, for instance, coming from Galita to the city of Santa Barbara. It's specific just to the city geography, but I can double-check on that.
Okay. I'm uncomfortable with that number, because it seems to me that that really is all, the South Coast is the housing market for the city of Santa, for people who live in Santa Bar, or work in Santa Barbara. It isn't unreasonable for them to travel those distances. Getting outside that, yes, then it becomes a problem. And as we know, if the highway's closed, we're in real trouble. And then you used the word, this was a little bit of editorializing, Commissioner Jordan, word stagnating about the AUD projects. Became possible, first of all, it leveled off. It's not, we don't know that it's stagnating. And obviously, when developers, when program became available, developers looked at it and said, wait, this looks good, right? And we got lots of applications. Well, they used up all the, the good sites. And they had a, I hadn't thought about it, and supporting this program was the increase in property values as a result of the interest generated by the program. So, which made it harder for the nonprofit entities to build capital A affordable housing. So, I personally wouldn't use the word stagnating, because I, I think that there's got to be kind of, there's got to be a kind of a limit anyway, where there is, where there no longer are suitable or possible sites. We've seen some very creative things with putting together different properties and creating one lot out of it and putting good-sized projects on them. But, and then the jobs housing balance imbalance, it's a problem. You know, that, I think the city first started talking about that in 1974 with the Impacts of Growth Requirement, which talked, report, which talked about that as a, as a major issue. And that, and, and we didn't, downzoning to lower the amount of housing, it happened in 1975, but we didn't get to the growth management and in the non-residential thing until 1989 with Measure E. And yet, and it, and we are still behind the A-ball in terms of bringing them into balance. But I think it's unreasonable to bring them into balance when you, we already have such a job center in the city of Santa Barbara. It's just not going to be, be possible. We can improve it, perhaps. And certainly, the, the production of rental units, when there hadn't been any built for decades, through, as a result of the AUD incentive program, has certainly been effective in helping in that regard. But I think we're, Commissioners, Commissioner Campanella, Commissioner Schwartz, talking about the objections to these projects. I think that, yes, people are, this hasn't happened in the city for decades, and people are, all of a sudden, yes, alarmed. But I think a large part of it is that what, this is a test program, that I'm talking about the incentive, AUD incentive, high-density projects, was to see what, if the community would get the kind of housing that it needed, which is affordable to workforce. To me, that was 80 to 120% from the beginning. I know, and there have been other interpretations of that. And, but here we have, what are, they're, they're billed as luxury units, they're advertised as luxury units. And there's obviously a market for them. Well, 604 East Cota, it opened and became available for rentals, and the studios were snapped up immediately. So, it, there is a market for it, but, you know, $1,500 to $1,900 rents, 400 square feet or so, without a square inch of closet space, by the way. So, the, there's, there's a synthesis on, it seems as if the general plan, and I objected to this way before, but that is if we have to grow in order to be healthy economically. And I think that is a myth. There are many communities that have gotten to a certain size, and they stay that size, but they, they're, continue to be economically successful. It isn't necessary to have job growth, and then if we have job growth, we're, you know, we're more behind the A-ball on the housing end. So, anyway, yes, this is a great piece of work on staff's part. Thank you so much. And unless anybody else has something that they have to say on the subject, we'll, we'll conclude it with that. And I'll be back next week for the joint meeting on this subject. Okay. That brings us to administrative agenda, committee and liaison reports. First is staff hearing officer liaison report. Commissioner Higgins?
Madam Chair, I'd like to punt and give that update next week.
Okay. Any other committee and liaison reports? Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a notice out on a night I was unaware of that, that was coming up on ABR. Ortega Park is going to be doing a transition and upgrades at the park, and that's been noticed, I think it's the next meeting. So, it'd be, I haven't seen any information on it, I just noticed it today, but that would be great for the community. And I think we're supposed to be seeing it, but I'm, I'm not too sure, you know, when they come, we've seen other type improvements like that, but it's good to see that that's going to be paid attention to, because it'd be, be great for the existing, and, you know, we have some new residents as well. So, that would be good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
The Single Family Design Board, in the last couple of meetings since our last meeting, has had about three or four projects that are in the coastal zone, and nothing of great interest, except that they could possibly be coming to us for CDPs after coastal review, so we might have a little more business instead of canceling meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you. I just wanted to give an update on the Planning Academy, if I could. Some of you know we are hit at the midway point and starting to get into some hyper-focused local subject matter. Next week, we're talking about sea level rise and adaptation and resiliency. And then we're getting into a conversation about the Dangerman Preserve in Bixby Ranch and coastal access. So, it's starting to turn into some local subject matter. The following week, it's all Montecito subject matter. So, it's, it's, it's a lot of fun, and I just wanted to relay a comment I got. We have surveys that go out every week that people respond to, and I got this one back this morning, I won't reveal the name. Says, "I'm enjoying the different perspectives presented by the Planning Academy speakers. It's recharging to attend, and I leave the sessions feeling stoked to be a city planner." So, if you're not attending out there... So, if you're not attending out there, you're missing out.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Don't see any lights on. All right. Well, that completes the Planning Commission agenda for today, and the meeting is adjourned.